So, open at 6:41, and here we go again with the infamous message. This meeting of the Planning Board is being recorded, transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and YouTube, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the opening law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Rutland Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public entities with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found at Rutland's website at townofrutland.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: by watching Rutland Community Television live on Channel 192 on the Town's website, www.townofrutland.org, or by reviewing a recording of the meeting on the Town's YouTube page following the meeting. No person in attendance by members of the public who are permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure technological means, uh, yeah. Wait a minute. To ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means, in the event that we are unable to do so, despite the best efforts, we will post on Rutland's website a video recording, meeting minutes, and other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. This has been a recording. For other options, press zero.
Question for the Chair. Do you have to read this every time, or can we vote to have you skip it?
Uh, I'm following, this was instructions that I believe came down from the Town Administrator until I hear something different.
Norm, if I may, um, just out of experience, the Board of Selectment and the Conservation Commission both opted not to read it at the beginning of their meetings this week. So, I don't think it's necessarily set in stone. Um, they actually, the Select Board voted not to read it, and the Concom didn't read it because we didn't have any public participants at the time.
Okay, so you say the Selectment did vote to not read it?
Yep, at the beginning of the meeting, they had a vote, um, to forego reading the opening meeting announcement.
Or might I just check with the Town Administrator to cover yourself?
Yeah, I think I do want to. Okay, um. Agenda items are basically, one item which is an amendment to the Town zoning bylaw. Uh, I'm just gonna kind of paraphrase the public hearing notice. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, 'cause again, it's got all kinds of other stuff, but anyway. Uh, it does say the Rutland Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, on Wednesday, June 17th, at 6:30 PM to consider creation of a new zoning bylaw article titled Agricultural Accessory Uses: Agri-Tourism Bylaw. Uh, and this public hearing was published in the Telegram Gazette, June 2nd and the 19th. And, uh, with that, I think, uh, what we're just gonna do is start with a presentation from Town Planner Dave George.
All right, great. Um, let me just get squared away here and expand the presentation. So I appreciate the opportunity, uh, tonight to make this a presentation. I'll be brief, as brief as possible. So, agritourism, you know, I mean, what is it? People have asked, what is agritourism? Generally speaking, agritourism is a wide range of activity that brings visitors to local farm enterprises. Ideally, visitors will purchase goods and wares from the farm enterprises. Uh, the bylaw applies to agriculture in all of its branches. Uh, Chapter 48, 3 of the Zoning Act has a comprehensive definition of agriculture, which is very extensive. As we know, agriculture is given broad protections under the Zoning Act. Uh, agritourism, based on the research, agritourism does well in areas like Worcester County, which has several urban areas to draw visitors from, such as Worcester, Fitchburg, and Gardner. Uh, agritourism income has been strong in Worcester County, which is consistent with national trends. According to the 2017 Census of Agriculture, agritourism income increased from 5.4 million in 2012 to 8.9 million in 2017 in Worcester County. Agritourism income represents a small portion of total farm income. As you can see on the slide, we've also looked at the 2007 Census of Agriculture, which shows income at that time of $346,000. So looking at the trend line, we would expect continued increases in revenue and income. Um, in town, there are several farm enterprises that currently exist, and they occur on over 1,000 acres of land. These enterprises engage in a wide range of agricultural activities and offer a wide range of products. Uh, the base map shows the working landscape, working landscapes, rather. The map includes areas which have an agricultural preservation restriction on the land and land that is part of the Chapter 61 program. Uh, the idea of agritourism goes back always, goes back almost a year and a half, and the first zoning bylaw proposal was drafted in February of this year. Uh, we did have discussions, we did have discussions early on with Alta Vista, Schultz, and Mesa Farms regarding accessory uses. Uh, in these instances, these enterprises came to town, and they were looking to find out how to expand some of the things that they could do on their site. Um, so, you know, we know a little that the COVID pandemic hit us in March. Um, we were slightly setback from the schedule somewhat, but we continued to work on the bylaw. Subsequently, the AdCom voted to endorse the bylaw concept on May 19th. Now, consistent with the Right to Farm bylaw and several other planning documents, the bylaw promotes open space preservation and opportunities for town farmers to diversify income streams. The bylaw lists, for the first time, allowable accessory uses and new uses that may be considered accessory. Uh, uses believed to be, uh, to be allowed as a right may be reviewed by the Building Commissioner. If someone has a question and they want to know if the use is allowed or not, the Building Commissioner may consult with the AdCom and the Planning Office. If, if it's determined that the use needs site plan review, then a permit from the Planning Board is needed. Additionally, additionally, uses on, uses of land on agricultural preservation restricted land will also need likely approvals from MDR in addition to a site plan from the Planning Board. Uh, the bylaw has been publicized on the Town's Facebook page and website. We had a month-long public, yes.
Yeah, excuse me. Do you have to let, Sean just texted me that he's trying to get on. Do you have to let him in?
Yeah, but I don't see him on here.
Wow.
I'm trying to keep an eye on that while I do this presentation. I don't see him here.
Okay. Hey, well, he just texted me.
I'm almost done, and I'll be.
Okay.
I'm almost done. I'll be able to keep my full attention on the screen in a second. I apologize. Um, so there was a public comment period, there was a month-long public comment period. We did receive five to six, uh, positive comments on this, which are in the packet, which we'll be getting to in a few minutes. Uh, in addition, the Planning Board bylaw Subcommittee reviewed the draft and recommended it to the full Planning Board for a hearing, uh, tonight. The bylaw has been placed as warrant article number eight for the upcoming town meeting. Uh, in summary, the proposal is expansive, it's not restrictive, it promotes open space preservation, promotes diverse income streams for farm enterprises. It allows the town to market itself as an agritourism destination. For more information, please see the Town Planning Board, uh, Planning Website under the URL listed here, or, uh, or contact the Planning Office. I, so I thank, thanks, thank you for everybody's time on that presentation.
Dave, the only thing I was gonna say is, um, we don't, for the, for the site plan review, we don't give a permit, right? We just give a, um, i- is it a permit, or is it just a finding?
It, it is a permit. It's a site plan review permit, so a decision would be drafted, and the, the decision would be the permit.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you got the references in here for that. That's gonna make it all a bit easier for passing this thing out.
Yeah, as you can see, the references are pretty extensive. We spent a fair amount of time researching this and tried to be, have a comprehensive, uh, document as much as possible.
And, uh, Sean just texted me, he's having a problem trying to get in.
Okay.
Okay, I don't see him right now still.
So, um, well, okay, just I'm gonna, I'll go with, uh, since I don't see, I'm just trying to, I don't know, something strange is happening here. I actually do not see any public.
Norm, that's what I was gonna say. I just went through the packet, and I don't see anything on the public comments. Do you?
I have the packet coming up in a second. I was looking at an email for someone who's trying to access this meeting. I apologize, I'll be, I'll get to that right now, um.
Okay. I just went through it, Dave, and I, I see all the presentation, I see the bylaw, but I don't see any comments.
The packet was updated.
Oh, I, I pulled this from the website.
It was updated since that time.
Oh, okay. That's probably why I don't have that. I'll, I, I went to the website to pull it down.
Are you seeing the packet now, the agenda?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so this is, it's in here. I'll go to the end of the document if I can. So, the.
Yep, that's what I did.
So there's, uh, five, uh, recommendation, five letters in support.
No, I'm just, I'd like you to know, um, Sean says there's no link. He's been trying, but there's no link.
There's a link on, i- if you wanna text him, Dick, if you go to the Planning Board's, uh, 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 calendar, and then do the Planning Board, standard Planning Board agenda, the link's.
Sean's on now, I believe.
Oh, he is?
I think so.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Yep.
I had to try to find my way. So what are we pulling up for me?
So, um, so we have a letter from the AdCom in support. That's this right here.
Good. All right.
We have a letter from, um, Lindon Nichols. Pretty extensive comments here. You want me to hold these so you can read them, or what do you, how do you wanna handle this?
Yeah, I just was, I wanted to read Lindon's. I got the AdCom one, I just wanted to rip through that one. 'Cause he's, he works for the, uh, USDA, so I wanted to see what he had to say. All right, I like that. He did a good job.
You, say this is in some package, or, you know?
No, there's nothing at this point, Dick. The, these aren't on the website.
Oh, they're not?
No, I went, I pulled it down, and that's what I was looking for before the meeting started, and I couldn't find any comments, so that's, that was gonna be my question. Do we get any comments?
And, well, is it possible that Dave can send this to us after the meeting?
Yeah, it's just a PDF.
Uh, yeah, I, I can send this out afterwards, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yeah, we got this, we only got three.
Sorry, no, I might pay more attention to one because it's, I'm learning.
Cutting and pacing for Mr. Jarvey, drinking hard.
Wow, this is making my head spin.
I'm sorry, you see, you know what I'm doing here?
I see what you're doing, David.
I apologize, I'm trying to communicate with, with this, uh, Kevin Jarvey's trying to dial into this. I apologize for that, I just.
I was gonna say, after the meeting, or after the presentation and reviewing these, if there's nobody on, I was gonna, uh, motion to close.
Uh, would you like to see the other letters?
Yeah, I just wanted to finish Lindon's, all right.
I'm sorry, let me know when you're done, and I'll.
No, I was, I just wanted to read that last paragraph, and I'm good. And I got through it, yep. I'm fine. And this is Mr. Williams. Okay, I'm good. Dale, let's see what Dale has to say from Mesa Farms. Excellent, okay.
I like how it said we have review and overtake.
But, uh, David, that, his suggestion, the last paragraph, um, is that, are we gonna discuss that tonight? Or, Norm?
Uh.
Anything is often.
I, I don't think, I think that the bylaw as written needs to have a connection between, between engaging in farm activities and the reason for being there. You know, the goal is to encourage, encourage purchase of products that exist at the farm. That's definitely a, a prime consideration of this bylaw. It has to be connected to agriculture, so I, I'm not really sure we would, we would want to strike anything at this point.
No, I just was saying, should, uh, it was more of a discussion point. I'm not saying we should do it. I'm just saying we should, uh, because I think we had some of this discussion about this topic in the, uh, bylaw Subcommittee, if I'm not mistaken. You know, percentages, what was gonna be sold. I think Dick brought this up too. You know, you know, you can't, uh, you can't, sometimes you can't make beer with, with, uh, 100% farm products. You're gonna have to get some products out of state, so.
Which is o, which is okay under the Zoning Act. The Zoning Act supports the majority coming from within Massachusetts, and a significant portion happening on-site. It doesn't prohibit goods from out of state. It encourages Massachusetts agriculture, however.
Yeah, yeah.
And there was one more, um, letter.
Oh, man. All right.
Good, I'm glad we have, uh, had some letters in there then.
Yep.
Yeah.
So David, has there been, or, I guess through Norm, has there been any revisions or, or updates to the bylaw come from the Ad Commission?
Uh, yeah, there was a couple of minor changes to this, which I will, let me just go back up. And I'll explain the reason for these, um. So first off, in this section here, under the procedures, previously, there was a registration requirement. However, that was really, the intent of that was to provide customer service to entities that are new, who may not understand how this works. Uh, registration is not encouraged because it's, it's a requirement that we don't apply equally to accessory uses. So at the recommendation of Town Council and having discussed this with the AdCom, that language was struck. And what you'll see here is that for otherwise, for new, first-time uses, which are believed to be as of right, the applicant may request review of the use and advice from the Building Commissioner in consultation with the AdCom and the Planning Office. So if somebody doesn't know, and they want more information, they can ask.
Okay.
So there was a change there, yep.
I was gonna say, David, I think the RTV had a question that came in.
I don't have an email from them.
Oh, it was, it was a pop-up. I think it's under, if you click on the chat button down on your screen, where the one is, do you see that? There's participants, then there's a chat. I think that's where the RCTV question came in from. This one right there.
Okay, will you please give two or three examples of uses that would be permitted by this bylaw? Sure, the uses that would be permitted by this bylaw are listed right in here.
They're, they're saying what would not be permitted.
Be not permitted, David.
Not permitted. Certainly, anything that is, I'll ask the question very broadly and generally. If it's not a principal permitted use, as that term is defined in the Zoning Act, and it's a principal use, that's not agriculture, it would not be allowed. So for example, you couldn't have a standalone restaurant that didn't have a nexus to the agricultural use of the property.
Couldn't have a, a motocross track, right?
Correct, thank you. That's another example of it, yep.
And, David, I had a question. You, based on, on these allowable uses, you couldn't bring in a, uh, you know, like they do in, uh, in Worcester at Greendale. You couldn't bring in a, uh, what's the word? You know, the, the rides, what's the word, the, you know, the, uh.
Carnival?
Carnival?
Yeah, the carnival. You couldn't bring a carnival in.
I think a carnival, I think a carnival would probably be a stretch. If someone wanted to attempt it, they'd have to do it under here.
Special events?
Right.
Okay.
It could be attempted, but I think it might be a stretch.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's probably too disconnected from agriculture. I think when we talk about festivals, we're talking about festivals for products that may be grown on-site. Um, or if we're talking about concerts, there's a, like, a nexus to the agricultural use where there's, you know, a farm experience to be had, products to be sold, and so forth. I think that would be a stretch, but that would be at the discretion of the Planning Board, um, to make that final decision. We would try to discourage that, or we would lay that out, that that doesn't seem to be a, a clear use.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to make sure, 'cause, you know, uh, Dick, what's the one down in, uh, um, oh, God, it's in Connecticut, just south of us. Uh, well, they have the, uh, the dairy showing and all that stuff, uh, in the summer.
Overage Club?
No, it's, uh, it's a town in Connecticut.
Was it Windsor, not Windsor Lock, no?
No, it's on, it's on the other.
Woodstock.
What, what, yeah, Woodstock, Woodstock, Connecticut.
Yeah.
They have like a big carnival, uh, you know, they, they show the cows, they've got all kinds of animals.
Yeah, that's like a farmer's field day.
Yeah, exactly. But that would fall under the, uh, special events, I'm guessing, and that would be under a site plan review by the Planning Board.
It would.
I would think so, because that would be, that would be an event of some sort, that would be a special event, that would not be a regular occurrence at the site.
Yep, good enough.
Could I throw the chair real quick? I just didn't know if, um, we're, we're actually supposed to respond to the RCTV message, or did that person hear us?
I, I think they can hear what's, what's happening with this.
They can? I just wanted to make sure that they, they, you know, we don't verify that that question was answered, that's all. Thank you.
And then there was another small change that we made. We made it right here. We brought in this language, non-agriculturally exempt. This is to make it, make a distinction between what's happening here as uses allowable by right without a site plan and uses that require the site plan. Because the uses requiring site plan are typically, have historically not been associated with agriculture, but they are becoming associated with agriculture through custom and over time, as, as things change. And also with the MDR, and MDR is also granting special permits for weddings, receptions, and private parties in other situations like this on APR land. So we are, you know, A, A, APR is aware of the changes, and so are we. We're trying to be provided as many options as possible.
Okay. But David, the, the allowable uses, the 1 through 21, that still has to go through MDR, correct?
The only time it might have to go through MDR, maybe Dick can help me with this, or Kevin. The only time it would have to go through, it may have to go through MDR if it's on an APR land. That's, that's correct.
Okay.
That's a separate process, um, I don't know, Dick, you wanna jump in on that?
I wouldn't say, I mean, I can, uh, Kevin, I wouldn't say everything on there. I mean, like, uh, I mean, you wouldn't need to check with MDR if you wanna plant Christmas trees. You know what I mean? That's an allowable use as it is, um. But I think a lot, a lot of them, yeah, but I do see a couple in there, just as far as, I don't think you'd have to check with MDR for a fruit pumpkin or related U-PIC operation. Uh, maybe a corn maze, but that would be, maybe not, I don't know. That's a really good question. I'm not 100% sure. I would say the majority of them, yes, but there might be a couple that you wouldn't have to.
What, what I would suggest, you know, after the town meeting, we will send this on, on to MDR and, or ask somebody to to our meeting and, uh, have a discussion about this, or to the Ad Commission.
I don't know if you can get on it. I'm listening to it, but they can't see, and they can see.
Well, the AdCom has, the AdCom's aware of this bylaw, that we worked very closely with them on this, but there is a Delia Delonchamp at APR, MDR, we'll send this to her as a courtesy. If I could just cut in real quick, real quick, if there's a person looking to know if there's an HOA discussion tonight? No, there's no HOA discussion for Bryce. That's a separate matter on a different night. Thank you.
Marilyn, I, you said you can't see, uh, down in the lower left-hand corner. Are you, uh, gotta?
Start video.
I can't see anybody, but.
Go down to the lower left-hand corner.
Could you repeat what you want me to?
Cursor. It says video. Is there a? Jim, did you catch it?
Hey, Dick?
I can hear you, Marilyn, what's up?
No, I, I think, I don't know if Dick asked.
Cursor.
Oh, what he was trying to do, Marilyn, is in the, uh, lower left-hand of your screen.
Yep.
There's a mute and a start and stop video. If you click on this, on the start video, it should put you on.
Right, but it's not on the screen I'm looking at. Like, these home screens that I can't get out of.
Okay.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, but that's not where I am.
Okay.
All right. Okay, sorry about that. One more reason to get back to live meetings together.
Yeah, so true. So, the, the, Norm and/or David, this is my question. Um, uh, I better not phrase it how I was going to. Um, who is going to be in charge of, i- is it the building inspector that's in charge to make sure all of this MDR, uh, site plan review, all the permits are in place? Is that the governing authority for this?
Well, uh, if the use, if a use requires a building permit, the Building Commissioner would issue a building permit. If someone needs advice on whether a use is allowed as of right and does not require a building permit, they can contact the Building Commissioner for information. If they need site plan review, it's the Planning Board. And in addition, if it's an APR land, it would also possibly need a permit from MDR, which is a separate jurisdiction.
Well, a, and I get all that, but. Well, and I get all that, but my experience tells me that if somebody's not in charge of, of collecting all of these, and maybe that's our automated permitting system, that things seem to fall through the cracks, and I'm not a fan of that.
Well, when you say, when you say collect, what do you mean by collect?
Well, i- i- if, if someone's going to do a, an event, who's going, who's gonna be in charge of making sure that event has the site plan review, has the Board of Health, has any building permits needed, and Mdar approval? Having all of those need to be in one packet somewhere. And, and that's my, that's my question. Who is the governing authority to make sure all those, if you want to call it permits, like we say in the upper part of this bylaw, is managed? Individually, I'm not comfortable with having four or five people, you know. I, I guess I'm looking for one, one, and if that's our permitting software that keeps track of that, I'm fine with that, but I, I need, I need some reassurance that this is gonna be tracked and not just go willy-nilly.
Well, once again, if someone needs a building permit, that's part of the viewpoint system. So if someone applies for a building permit for a use that needs a building permit, then they would have to apply for a building permit online. And once they've done that, that building permit would be routed to FIRE, Board of Health, and other departments. And at that point, if the Board of Health was not previously aware of it, they would become aware of it at that time, that a permit would be needed for the use.
Yeah, I'm not buying. My, my, my problem with this is, is that, is that we've got a bylaw that, that has five different departments enforcing it. I don't see it being effective. That's just my opinion. Because you're gonna have five departments that, as me as a citizen, go see something, I don't know, let's just pick something, a a corn maze, and just wondered, I wonder if all that, if all the permits, how, how does anybody know if all the permits are pulled? Mdar's aware of it? I, I guess that, that's my question. I was looking.
In the case of a corn maze? In the corn maze specifically?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to pick something out that has multiple permits. You know, an event, maybe, I don't know, a pumpkin picking. I, I, I'm just trying to figure out something that has multiple permits with Board of Health, a building permit, site plan review, Mdar, so there's four, that I can think of, four different entities that have to be involved. My problem is, who keeps track of all those entities saying yes? The applicant?
If it doesn't have a building permit, I think is, is your question, Tim, because we know who was it? That, you know, if it needs a building permit, then the building inspector is, is in charge, right?
Yeah, but it's all the other ones. I guess what I'm getting at is, there's no folder that has all of the permits in it for that event? How does, how does the town know that everything's been pulled for it?
Final oversight sheet.
Yeah, that's, thanks, that's what I was trying to get at.
Should Dave be the one?
I, I don't know. That's what I'm asking, because this, this bylaw really doesn't say anything. And again, I don't want to get restrictive. I just want to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Well, in the ordinary case, consider this to be like any other use, where if a building permit's necessary, the applicant gets the building permit. If the applicant, applicant doesn't get a building permit and it's discovered that one is necessary, then that is an enforcement matter, like any other enforcement matter when it comes to zoning. If someone is going to try to do events and they're not going to apply for permits, and they're willfully not doing it, well, the net operator is operating at their own risk of a complaint.
Okay.
If someone's knowledgeable of the zoning bylaw and they're doing the outreach that they ought to be doing, they're gonna understand what the process is, and we're gonna walk them through the process to help them understand what's necessary, as we would, as we would for any other type of zoning situation.
Hey, David? Dave?
Yes, Marilyn.
What if the event does not go through the building inspector, that doesn't, is there an event that could take place that doesn't go through the building inspector, therefore, there wouldn't be anybody in charge of keeping track of the permits?
Right, I think in that case, it's gonna be a matter of, is the applicant aware of the bylaw? And have they taken steps to understand that they are responsible for site plan review? And if they're not, they're operating at their own risk and they're subject to zoning enforcement.
But who tells them all that?
Well, if we have a situation that happened in an adjacent town here, where there were events happening on a regular basis, and those events were creating a nuisance in the neighborhood, and, and those events did not have a proper permit in place, well, that ended up in a pretty gnarly dispute, where, you know, a lot of people had to spend time and resources to defend themselves as opposed to just getting a permit in the first place. I don't think that town has this kind of a permitting process. So we're trying to be proactive and offering permitting process. That's, that will hopefully capture these types of situations and, and, and not have that kind of situation happen in this town, as happened in the adjacent town.
Right.
You know, for, for at least some of these things, I, I don't even think that it is necessarily a permit situation. A Upick pumpkin, pumpkin patch, or a Upick blueberry patch, or raspberry patch. You see these all over the place, and I am sure. It, it's, it's just a farmer that sticks up a sign and says, "Upick blueberries."
Right.
And that's it, that's the end of it. So, you know, for, you know, like, I'll say, I guess I'll say particularly, number one, number two, number four, probably even number six, number seven, processing demonstrations in many cases, probably, number 10. There, there, there probably would not, there, there is no reason for a permit process.
All right.
If I can, through the chair also, you know, in, in my opinion, as somebody who has full intentions of following these guidelines from the beginning to the end, and knowing that this is all happening on either 61A land, or somebody that owns a farm, that is a farmer, they're gonna be hopefully involved with the agcom. They're gonna wanna promote their event through the agcom, they're gonna wanna promote their event through other farmers. And just with that being said, I, you know, if I'm, you know, we're gonna, still a small town, I guess, is kind of my point, and the farming community, you know, hopefully, we're gonna all be able to stop people from taking advantage of this. And I know I would, if I saw somebody that was doing something they shouldn't. I've done everything I can properly, you wanna make sure that we're doing it the right way, that's the whole point of this bylaw, so I think, you know, just as a farmer, I would help support this bylaw and make sure that anybody else that's doing anything within the town is pulling the right permits. If that's fair to say.
And then, I, I guess my last comment to the, to the bylaw was, typically, somewhere in our bylaws, if we have zone enforcement, do we have to call that out, some type of enforcement, or is that? I, I guess I don't know, and that's what I'm asking.
No, that doesn't have to be called out specifically. Zoning enforcement is a function of the zoning act, and it has its own section of the zoning act. So it doesn't need to be called out specifically here.
I just remember at one time, we had, we, we had to vote on, on different portions of the zoning act for enforcement to be able to let, let people, let the different departments, being the PPW or the building inspector do enforcement. Would that be the same case here, or would it be under, would this bylaw be under general enforcement by the building inspector for his section?
This would be under zoning enforcement, under Chapter 48, Section 7 of the zoning act, which gives the building commissioner zoning enforcement powers.
And then, of course, if it's under the Board of Health, they have their right to do their type of enforcement, correct?
That's correct.
Excellent. That's all I need to know. Good.
Okay. The other thing, and I've gotta, I've gotta bring this up again, Dave, I know I brought this up to you before. I'm not sure whether you've done anything with it or not. But when you get down to these permitted uses, starting particularly with number 12, there's a phrase here, where a significant portion of products sold is prepared onsite with farm crops grown or raised onsite. And that onsite, at least from what I've heard so far, means either onsite or within Massachusetts. How is someone reading this to know that it means either on the farm itself or within Massachusetts?
Right, I did look into that question. The advice that I had was that we did not need to add any additional language, because we reference, we reference general law, Chapter 48, Section 3, often in this bylaw. And the operation of 48.3 is that there's broad protections to agricultural uses. And that even if we do nothing with the zoning bylaw, these uses are gonna be permissible anyways. We're just trying to list these out for the first time, to give an indication of what types of uses are, are allowed as examples. But because we reference 48.3 numerous times, it's 48.3 which controls in terms of, of the sales measure and the acreage measure for an agricultural use. And that it, it's, it's playing in those, it's playing for the case law fathers, that it's, it's materials grown onsite and procured in Massachusetts for this significant portion of it. This doesn't prohibit materials coming from outside of Massachusetts to finish a product or to supplement it. So, the advice I had was because we, we reference, we reference that nothing here is intended to limit agricultural use under 48.3. We've referenced 48.3 about five to 10 times, that it wasn't necessary. I think if someone has a question on how it works, we would work with those people on a case-by-case basis.
So legal says there's no need?
That's correct, because we reference 48.3 so many times.
Okay. Okay, now, I do not see, other than, Kevin, I still see no one from the public to see if they have any questions or comments.
Norm, I just, I just looked on the chat, and there's no other comments coming in from RCTV.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you that we did have a lot of, there was some discussion at the select board meeting. At the last meeting, they decided not to take positions on any article. I think your opinion was that because they placed it, that's an indication that they're comfortable with placing it. There was substantial discussion prior to placing it. It's known there. The FinCom has taken this up once, they'll be taking it up tomorrow. So it's out there. We did our advertisement on Facebook for the public comment session. There were some comments on Facebook. You know, we've done our best to get this out as much as possible.
Okay, I'd just like to make a note that obviously this was reviewed by the bylaw subcommittee, and it has also undergone legal review by town council.
And Norm, the bylaw subcommittee recommended it to the planning board, correct?
Correct.
I mean, if we don't have any more public comment, and I guess I asked through you, Norm, if, if there's no internal comment, should we close the hearing and proceed?
Well, does anyone else have any further comment or questions?
Motion to close the hearing?
Suck.
Any, any discussion on that? Okay, roll call vote, in favor, Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick? Where did Dick go?
Right here.
Oh, okay. And, Norm, aye. With that, what in the world is going on here, come on? I would be looking for a motion, and I realize this is already on the warrant. But...
You need a motion to recommend it to the select board?
Yes, and I'm, you know, I'm, let me see, let me see if I can get the words right. Okay, a motion to forward this agricultural accessory use agritourism bylaw to the select board for inclusion on the 2020 annual town meeting with our recommendation for the town to take favorable action on it at town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Okay, in favor, roll call again. Now, Tim?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Norm, aye. The motion is carried unanimously.
Norm, do we, do we as a planning board have to recommend to the select board or the moderator to have David do a presentation, or because he's a town employee, it's okay?
I don't think we need to recommend anything, obviously, if Dave wants to do the presentation, which I think he should, he is going to need permission from the moderator.
Yes, I, I expect to be doing a presentation. I think you're right, it should be done. I'll request the permission of Mr. Jordan, either at the time of the meeting or beforehand through the town administrator.
Yeah, would be better ahead of time.
Okay. I will do.
David, is this, is this, knowing that this is gonna be like a drive-through type town meeting, is there any opportunity that, that this can be presented, where there'll be a screen or something, or? I guess I'm asking, has Mike thought of how to do this?
I'm not sure of the exact logistics. I know there will be audio, if nothing else. I will have these hand, I will have a handout, a paper presentation of the slide presentation.
Okay, they can follow that. Perfect.
And also a copy of a letter that I'm gonna draft, which is the planning board's recommendation, which also explains, it's kind of an explainer for agritourism in general. So that'll be a packet of about six sheets or so.
Okay, so as long as that handout's there, somebody could follow it in their car or sitting down or wherever they're at then?
That's correct.
Perfect, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, I did just get a note from RCTV that there will not be any display for projections, so it'll have to be paper.
Okay, good.
Okay, good, thank you.
Guess that's it.
Okay, well, that's all that's on the agenda. Anything additional to come before the board?
I don't think for this meeting, huh? Motion to adjourn?
Do I hear a second?
Second, I did, I seconded.
Okay, and hopefully, let's see, we have, what, one more meeting next week? And I'd love to really think that town offices will be open, and we will find some way thereafter in July of meeting in person. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm
Yay!
Are you zoomed out?
I'm zoomed out, boy, am I.
Well, July 1st is the opening of the office. David, is that still true? Has there been any communications among the staff?
Right, the offices will be open to the public on July 1st. Right, the offices will be open to the public on July 1st. Uh, they have put up plastic screens on the doors, at the counters and so forth.
Okay.
Uh, there's a mask requirement in public areas. Um, I don't know however, what the plan is for public meetings. I haven't heard anything on that, but I do agree with everybody that it would be good to see everybody in a live setting and, you know, and have a meeting as we used to.
For the social distancing, uh, aspect, Norm, should we, our, our first meeting in July, should we have it in the library in that, uh, middle room? You know, it's got more space?
Yeah, we, we, we can't use our little cubby.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's, there's no doubt about that.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is, uh, and I, I don't know, I, I don't know where I heard it, and I even think it maybe was Holden, that they actually had a selectmen's meeting in person.
Oh, wow.
Oh.
Um, maybe I'm wrong, but someone did, let's put it that way.
Norm, I know you don't like the basement over at Com Hall, but it, push comes to shove, that's a big space. We should be able to get enough tables out with enough distance to respect the social distancing downstairs there, if nothing else.
Yeah, RCTV just said, uh, Governor Baker's order of 10 people indoors is still in effect to July 1st.
Yeah.
So we're under 10, so we legitimately could have a meeting among us, us girls.
Except then, we can't have very many visitors.
Yeah, that's true.
So if, if we have a, you know, an 11th person that wants to attend the meeting, we're up the creek.
Yeah, that's true. So we got to wait till after July 1st. All right.
So.
One more Zoom meeting then.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, adjourn?
Second.
That's already been seconded.
Already been seconded.
Yeah, roll call in favor, Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. We are adjourned.